And if we could just take a minute and make sure all the panelists are on mute until it's your turn to speak. Great. I don't see him in the audience. Thank you, everyone, for logging in on time. We're just going to take another minute and work with a little snafu.
Can anybody hear me?
Yes, Jeremiah, we can hear you. Thank you very much. And I see that your hand is raised.
Do you want me to join as panelists? Attendee.
As a panelist, please. And if you could turn on your camera and rename yourself, that would be great. Okay, I'm just going to start with the opening statement. Welcome and thank you for being with us tonight for the candidate forum for the Albany City Council seats. I am Dr. Sharon Goldfarb of the League of Women Voters of Berkeley, Albany, and Emeryville. The League of Women Voters is a trusted membership organization that encourages informed and active participation in government. We do not endorse or oppose candidates or political parties. The League participates in advocacy and voter education. The advocacy arm of the League may take positions on issues such as valid measures. This forum is presented by the education arm of the League. I'd like to remind everyone that candidates have all agreed to participate under the ground rules set for this forum. The League is very proud of our history of civil discourse and nonpartisan forums. This is an educational event, not a debate. Before we get started, there are some details to review that will help you interact with the session. Microphones are muted for everyone except the candidates and the moderator. Candidates will stay on screen for the entire forum and will mute until it is their turn to speak. You, the audience, can submit questions in the Q and A. Please don't use the chat box. Use the Q and A feature. For our question orders to review and pass on to the moderators. We are recording this forum and will be posting it to our website and to the YouTube channel for the broader community to access. We have one forum to present in this session. This will be for the position of Albany City Council member. There are five candidates running for three positions on the city council. They are Jeremiah Garrett Canguillo, Jennifer Hansen Romero, Preston Jordan, Peggy McQuade, and Aaron Tiedemann. Albany uses proportional ranked choice voting, otherwise known as ranked choice voting. In this race, you will have five rankings available. That means you can rank the candidate in order of preference. During the counting, your vote will find its way to the most preferred candidate that can win or that can come closest to winning. Because of this, you do not need to vote strategically. You can rank the candidate you love first, like second, like third, and so on, without fear that voting for your favorite will cause your least favorite to win. The only error you can make is by giving more than one candidate the same ranking, as this will invalidate your vote. So rank it up in order and enjoy your power as a voter. To win one of the three city council seats, a candidate must earn more than one quarter of the votes. The City of Albany will be holding a ranked choice of voting information session webinar, both in person at City Hall and virtually via Zoom on Tuesday, October 15th at 6:00 PM. It will last approximately two hours. Information can be found at www.albanyca.org/rcb. All candidates were invited to participate in this forum. Candidates who are not present were given the option to provide a two-minute statement to be read by the moderator. We will be handling questions for the candidates in the following manner. Questions for this forum have been solicited in advance from the community and from our local leagues. We have screened questions to avoid duplications and anything inappropriate. The order of answering the questions will alternate, and each candidate will have one minute to respond to each question. I have drawn lots for the order of speaking, and the order will be reversed for closing statements. Each, the opening statement and the closing statement will be two minutes in duration. And I will just let you know Jeremiah is first, Preston is second, Aaron is third, Peggy is fourth, and Jennifer is fifth. So with that, we'll begin. And Jeremiah, can you unmute and please give us your two-minute introductory statement?
Yeah, hi. Good evening, everybody. Thank you for introducing me. My name is Jeremiah. Let's see, opening statement. Hmm, well. I didn't write a speech. I'm not going to sit here and read something. I prefer to speak from the heart. You know, I'm running for city council because I feel I can make a great difference in Albany. Continue to make a great difference in Albany. I could tell you some things why I would deserve your vote. It's because I pick up on things where things are just overlooked. First example. One thing I'm working on is school zones. And it's to be put in our municipal code book. And I've been working on this for over 10 years. And if you Google school zones, you'll see that it's a safety thing for schools regarding traffic speeds, grants for crossing guards from the state. But right now, we don't have school zones in our municipal code book. We're the only city in Alameda County that doesn't have school zones in our municipal code book, and I'd like to change that. I've been listening and to the transportation committee. And they say it's just not a good idea. Well, I think that's wrong. I disagree with that. You know, I wish we had more crossing guards. I wish our schools were safer. I wish we could reduce the speed limit. And that's a real big goal of mine. And if that's important to you, that's, that's one reason why I want to run for city council. If you'd like to meet me and ask me any questions, I'm on Solano Avenue in Talbot every Thursday at 2:00.
You, I'm sorry, we have to go to the next person. Preston.
Thank you, and thank you all for being here, those who are attending and those who are watching that recording later. I'm going to open with some accomplishments from the last four years, and I'll talk about what I hope to do if the voters choose me for the next four years and to close. Some of the areas I've worked in are increasing safety, maintaining the city's finances, reducing greenhouse pollution, implementing adaptation to climate change, increasing tax equity and improving the function of the city council with regard to democracy. On safety, I led the adoption of the requirement for owners of buildings with more than three residences to make them seismically safe, retrofitting them if necessary, which will save lives and prevent hundreds of injuries during a stronger major earthquake and reduce the probability of a firestorm afterwards. I designed and co-led the campaign for funding to add another firefighter paramedic to each shift commensurate to serve Albany's increased population. The shift before was six firefighter paramedics on each shift, and now it is seven. I also led the council to fund the community emergency response team training program. On maintaining city finances, I successfully co-campaigned for the measure restoring full funding for emergency medical services or response services, which had become a drain on the general fund otherwise. I opened successful negotiations with UC Berkeley while I was mayor, and Aaron Tiedemann here closed those negotiations as mayor, resulting in UC contributing $600,000 per year to Albany in recognition for the services it uses, which it does not pay for due to being taxed exempt. These actions resulted in the city achieving a surplus of revenue over expenditures for each of the last four years, which can be used to meet capital needs. I'm happy to be endorsed by Mayor John Micky, Vice Mayor Robin Lopez. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And Aaron.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Aaron Tiedemann. I've had the honor of serving on the city council since 2020, and I served as mayor last year. As someone who grew up in Albany, I ran for council in 2020 with Preston as Albany Forward to give back to my community that built on my time working in the community, in local government, serving on the Albany Economic Development Commission, and serving as an officer for the Albany Democratic Club. On council, my main focus has been on housing, where I brought my experience working as a policy specialist for the county, as well as a policy manager for the East Bay Housing Organizations to bear. In my time on council, we've approved hundreds of new units of housing, including Albany's only 100% affordable project that's soon to be completed, implemented the San Pablo Avenue specific plan to encourage development along our busiest corridor, and passed a model housing element that will set us up for success in the future. My biggest goal for council in the next term is to implement the programs outlined that housing element and find the tools and funds necessary to create affordable housing here in our city. I've also worked to support our city in a wide variety of other ways, including by negotiating the deal with UC Berkeley that ensures they contribute $6 million over the next 10 years to core city services, designing with staff our emergency rent and debt relief programs during COVID, and leading some of our community efforts when the Albany Twin closed, as well as when our community considered a ceasefire resolution. In my time on council, my colleagues on council and across the region have recognized my leadership by appointing me to the Association of Bay Area Governments General Assembly, Executive Board, Housing Committee, and Legislative Committee, where we direct housing and transportation policy across the Bay Area, as well as to the Board of Ava Community Energy, our city's public clean energy provider, where I currently serve as vice chair. I'm honored to have received the endorsement of our mayor, John Micky, Vice Mayor Robin Lopez, the Albany Democratic Club, State Senator Nancy Skinner, the Alameda Democratic Party, the East Bay Young Democrats, the Latina Young Democrats of Alameda County, the Asian Pacific American Democratic Caucus of Alameda County, Mayor Berkeley Jesse Aragorn, as well as others. Thank you.
Okay, Peggy.
Oh, off mute. Hi, again. Good evening, and thank you all for being here tonight, and thank you to the League for hosting this forum. I'm Peggy McQuade. I'm a proud resident of Albany. I've lived here all my life practically, and I currently reside in the house where I grew up. My career has been dedicated to serving the Albany community. I worked for the Albany Unified School District for 25 years, serving as the Albany Pool Director. My commitment to public service led me to serve on the Albany City Council for eight years, including two years as mayor. During my tenure, I worked tirelessly to develop and enhance programs, providing for the safety and well-being of our entire community. I'm still very actively involved in our communities through wide-ranging volunteer work, including delivering meals on wheels and holding leadership positions in several community organizations. I'm learning to bring my voice and extensive experience to develop policies which will ensure the fiscal stability of the city, implement the housing element, prioritize the climate action and adaptation plan, and upgrade our infrastructure. I've demonstrated the ability to view such policies through an equity lens, ensuring every community member's voice is heard. During my previous tenure on council, we navigated some very challenging times. In 2017, I wrote the council statement that was on every agenda, declaring that we welcome everyone to our city regardless of our differences. I was a leader in the Sanctuary City Movement, as well as being a leader regionally for United Against Hate. I brought successful resolutions to the council to fly the pride flag and the flag of the Confederated Villages of Lijon to require safe storage for firearms and to prohibit the sale of flavored tobacco. However, that is all in the past, and I'm eager to get to work creating an Albany future that appreciates our diversity and ensures a safe and secure space for everyone. Thank you.
And Jennifer.
Hi, everyone. Thank you for being here tonight. Appreciate all of your time. My name is Jennifer Hansen Romero. I'm fourth generation Albany, actually Albany-Berkley hybrid, I always say, because my my mom went to Berkeley High, my dad went to Albany High. But I love to serve my community here in Albany and connect our communities together as a whole. I've been involved in the community all my life through volunteer, several different volunteer organizations, including, you know, Girl Scouts, Albany Little League, and as well as Solano Avenue Association, helping our business district in Albany as well. I have been very grateful and happy to learn a lot of many new things as being on city council for the past two years. You, many of you may have noticed that you saw me last election, and it was because I ran last election but was seated for the two-year term to continue serving the final two years of a councilperson that left the seat early. So I wasn't sure at that time if I'd be here running for reelection, but decided that it's been a great opportunity. It's been a great time on council. I've enjoyed working with others and building lots of bridges and lots of opportunities with many folks and learning to keep communications open and figuring out what opportunities are available for our community as we move forward. Thank you.
Thank you. And so we're going to start with the questions now, and you'll have one minute to answer, and we're changing the order again. So Preston, can you please answer what inspired you to run for city council?
Yeah, so I have various things that I'm hoping to be able to continue on behalf of the voters. I guess one is, for instance, is when I came into the last term, I started a project to electrify a whole city block, and particularly a whole city block that has lower-cost apartments, and that is at the end of a natural gas distribution line. And so if we can electrify the whole block, we can cut off that line and at the same time electrify residences that are occupied by households with lower incomes in Albany. This past year, the Department of Energy awarded that project a grant of $200,000. It's the only award on the West Coast from that particular program. And so I'm interested in continuing to guide that project as an example. We also now have a streetlight guiding guidelines, and so I'm interested in working on improving the street lighting, as well as continuing my quest to improve tax equity within the city. Thank you.
And Aaron.
Thank you. Well, I was originally inspired to run because I wanted to give back to my community, and I had come back from college having done a degree in policy, politics, and economics, so wanted to get into government and have the chance to do that, working for the county and then getting involved locally in the city. This time, I was inspired to run for reelection, similarly to Preston, because there's a lot more that I think that we can work on, that I'm really excited to work on. Obviously, the main of those, like I mentioned, my opening is our housing element and what we can do on affordable housing. That's my number one issue is what I work on professionally. I think there's a lot more we can do, and we need to implement the programs in our housing element, as well as find new ways we can support affordable housing with real funding at the local, regional, and state level. There's also other huge things on the horizon, including what's going to happen with Golden Gate Fields, which is probably the question I get asked most recently on council. And I think we need to ensure that our community has a voice in that, and I'm excited to work on that as well, as well as a lot of other things. Thank you.
Okay, Peggy.
Thank you. I would say originally I ran because it was time. I had served on several different advisory bodies for the city, and I was, I was ready to take over a bigger leadership role by being on city council. After serving the eight years and taking a two-year break, there's still a lot of work to be done. There's a lot of work that I'd like to do, similar to what President Aaron said, I think, you know, working on implementing the housing element is very key to me, also working to bring together some of the groups that that don't always sit down in the same, in the same room or at the same table, and to have some really honest conversations. I think with the closure of Golden Gate Fields, looking at our fiscal situation, it's going to be critical. And so there's two parts to that. One is talking about what's going to happen at Golden Gate Fields and having our voice heard and thinking about how that's going to actually impact the city. And there's more, but I'm done.
Okay, Jennifer.
So as I mentioned in the opening statement, I've been on council for two years, which is barely enough time to get your toes wet. And so I'm looking forward to continuing to do a lot of great things within our community. You know, any group as a whole, I feel like a lot of us here are all for a lot of the same things, and we all have very similar ideas and encourage and work together is, is really important. And like Peggy mentioned, bringing the groups together that don't normally sit together and having open conversations, and there's just a lot of opportunity. What originally struck me to run was being asked by several community members to do so, and I had never really intended to before, but being asked many times and feeling like our community needs new voices sometimes. So, yeah.
Okay, and Jeremiah.
Yeah, thank you. What inspired me to run for city council? I do remember the spark. It was a combination of two things. Back in, I think, 2012, something like that. I remember it was, it was the nighttime, and I was driving down San Pablo, and I noticed a lot of street signs, street lights were out. And I drove up Solano, and I noticed a lot of street lights were out that should be on when it's dark. And I wrote down the numbers of all the poles, and I turned it into the city clerk. There's over 100, 200-some street lights out, and the city clerk, she says it would be so expensive to replace these bulbs. She said it costs like almost a million dollars. And then it's so funny, about six months later, the entire city of Albany got a grant to upgrade the entire city to LED lights. So I thought I was part of that. And the second spark is the school zones. I found out in 2012 that we don't have school zones.
We have to, we have to move on.
Okay.
Okay, the next question is, we're going to start with Aaron, is what do you think the current council has accomplished and what policy areas need more focus?
Thank you. I think this council over the past couple of years and since I've been on it has been very productive. As I mentioned in the opening, we've made progress on a lot of different areas. We passed a housing element that I think is a model for a lot of the Bay Area, and I've read most of those in the East Bay, so I have some experience there. We got UC Berkeley to pay its contribution to our core city services. We funded more for emergency medical services with the measure we had on the ballot during the last cycle. We have implemented and kept up our proportional ranked choice voting precedent I helped pass in 2020. We have started a whole bunch of interesting projects, like looking at a comprehensive look at our street trees, like creating more resources for paving sidewalks, for funding that. It has been a very productive time, and I think we can always do more on a lot of those issues, but especially housing. Thank you.
Thank you. And Peggy.
Thank you. I think President Aaron and Jennifer probably have a better perspective of what this particular council has accomplished. I think a lot of what they've accomplished was started in the years before that. I think it's really hard to look at, at a city council and say there's a start and an end. It's a linear, it's more linear than that. I think the housing element was actually begun before this particular council. They, they completed with the work that had been started earlier. I think they completed some work on the San Pablo specific plan. We had just about finished it, but there's probably loose ends to clean up. As far as the measure on the, on the fire safety, I think that's, that's great. I've worked with Preston and Aaron on that at the end of my term before. I think getting the money for the university, that's a step forward. We need to continue that, move it forward. Thank you.
Okay, and Jennifer.
Well, one of the things that I think has been really beneficial for our community, and although I think the the word is still getting around, and so I'll spread it a little bit more here, is when we were initially meeting together two years ago to put together the strategic plan, one of the things that we all agreed on was, you know, the transparency of things. And so now we have a live document on our website to show, you know, kind of our community what we've been doing and how far we've accomplished these things. And you can see step by step and, and line by line, kind of one of the things, the goals that we had set out to accomplish and kind of where we're at with these goals. And so I think, again, you know, really that, you know, basically full disclosure of kind of where, where we're at, what we're trying to do, and how we're going to accomplish it is really beneficial to our community. So I'm really proud of that.
Hey, Jeremiah.
Can you repeat the question, please?
Yes. What do you think the current council has accomplished and what policy areas need more focus?
I think, I think people need to be focused on more. I think the city council needs to focus on people and what they actually need. What actually improves their day-to-day life? What actually makes a difference? You know, I I think, I think a solution for that would be to expand the food giveaway, what is it, once a month at the community center? And I think the city, the city of Albany maxes out at what, 125 people for that program? So the city has a food program. They pass out food once a month to about 125 people, and it's maxed out. There's people sitting on the waiting list for six months. But that's where I come in. I pass out food every Thursday, about 150 people every week. So I think the city of Albany could talk to Alameda County Food Bank, and I think the city of Albany needs a food bank.
Okay.
Somewhere in Albany, we didn't have a food bank. So I think that's one thing we could approve on, is a food bank.
Okay, Preston.
Thank you. Yeah, it's hard to pick, pick a few areas, but I'll talk to greenhouse pollution reduction and climate change adaptation. So this council waived the fee for street tree planting and concrete removal for the same, which doubled the number of street trees that are being planted, which is a climate adaptation to bring down temperatures in the city, which have gone up five degrees since 1990. Waived permits for replacing any gas-burning appliance with one operating electricity. Waived the fee to have bike parking installed. As far as an area that needs focus in the next term, the city started a project with a consultant to characterize the state of racial equity and perspectives in the city, and that unfortunately fails due to problems with the consultants. And so we need to restart that, reinitialize that process because we're lacking in our understanding in that area. And it's hard to move forward without that information. Thank you.
Okay, next question. We're going to start with Peggy. Why isn't there more affordable housing in Albany? What has Albany done in the last few years to address the housing crisis and provide services to people who are unhoused or who are at risk of becoming unhoused?
Okay, that's a lot of questions. I might have to break it up a little bit. Why is there not more affordable housing in Albany? Well, we're very proud of the fact that probably in October, a 61-unit fully affordable housing development will open. That started back when I was on council. You know, and it's important to remember that cities don't build housing. Cities make it possible. Um, you know, and it's important to remember that cities don't build housing. Cities make it possible for developers to build housing. So one thing that we need to continue working on is making sure that we don't put up barriers to people coming in to build housing. Uh, I think that we need a caf- what I call a cafeteria plan for housing. It's not one one opportunity, but a variety of things from ADUs to co- show, co-housing, shared housing, large large apartment buildings, all with a focus on equity and on um include in affordable housing. And I don't think I got all of your questions in there. There's a lot of little questions in there.
Okay, and Jennifer.
I'm gonna have you repeat the question for me, please.
Why isn't there more affordable housing in Albany? What has Albany done in the last few years to address the housing crisis and provide services to people who are unhoused or who are at risk of becoming unhoused?
Thank you. So I think Peggy, you did hit a lot of it. You're very good about getting getting lots of those tidbits in there. The it there's, there's a lot of work that uh can be done. Um, there's a lot of opportunities that still have to be developed, but very much so. Um, you know, we we have to as a city uh find ways to encourage um developers to come in and and develop more, but it isn't one as as Peggy mentioned, it isn't one just approach. It's got to be a multifaceted, multi-layered approach. Um, we've worked really diligently, I believe, as a community to put forth a lot of different programs and find and try to work out the needs of the people within our community to see who needs services and how we can um, how we can fit those needs and those services together. And very excited about the Saha Project opening. They're amazing.
Okay, Jeremiah.
Well, I was hoping you're gonna ask this question. You know, um the the simplest solution is ADUs because you could just put an ADU in your backyard. So if if you're a homeowner in Albany, if you're a homeowner and you own the house and you do the work yourself, you do the construction, the ADU, you do work, you do the work yourself, you don't need a a permit. If you're a contractor, doing work on a house, you need a permit. But if you own your own home and you're doing work on your own house, you don't need a permit. Here's the thing. Home Depot sells tiny homes, ADUs, fifteen, twenty thousand dollars max. Two stories. Easiest thing to do to fix our housing problem is have Home Depot free installation, free shipping.
Okay, you hit your time there. And so we're gonna move on to Preston.
Thank you. Yes, Albany contracts with Insight Housing um to perform ongoing relationship building and outreach to people who are homeless in Albany. And this is not a one and done. This is an ongoing relationship with regular um visits and assistance in whatever way the person needs. Um, as part of that contract, Albany has leased um a house and actually leased a second one with the ARPA funding to provide a place for people who are interested in in having a place to live, to live while they were waiting for permanent housing. Um, with regard to why Albany doesn't have more affordable housing, um Albany passed decades ago a requirement for any new residents to have a number of off-street parking spaces, which precluded development of new housing. We've since rescinded all those in the last council session. Um, we've also updoned San Pablo Avenue. Um, and fortunately, state law has required all cities to remove a number of barriers um that have created inequity and warehousing is built. So we do have the table set now to get it done.
Okay, and Aaron.
Thank you. Um, fundamentally, you need public funds to create affordable housing. Um, and not enough that comes from above us, from the state, from the federal level. It's just not enough investment. So we need to unlock more and we need to do it locally. Uh, we used our entire allocation of Measure A one funds that was from the county to build that a hundred percent affordable project. So we need to unlock uh local sources. That's why I've supported a regional and a local housing bond that I hope will be on our ballots in the future. Uh, in the absence of that investment that will create more affordable housing or in the interim, there are actions we can take, many of which I thought to include in our housing element or we're implementing now. Uh, that includes the homeless program Preston mentioned. It also includes tenant protections that keep people housed now, uh including just cause and rent control, as well as programs that encourage more housing development, like rescinding parking requirements. Um, one of the biggest efforts we stood up in this regard was our emergency rental and shadow debt relief program, which I worked closely with staff to design and used ARPA funds to keep residents housed with direct one-time assistance. Thank you.
Okay, Jennifer, this question will start with you. Why should landlords be responsible for paying the Measure R tax? Which this resident described as unfair.
I'm gonna have you repeat the question for me just one more time, just because I want to make sure that everybody hears.
This question was submitted. Why should landlords be responsible for paying the Measure R tax? Which this resident described as unfair.
I don't believe that the landlords should be responsible for paying the Measure R tax. I think that the Measure R was rushed to our council too quickly, um trying to do too little um by too few of people. And I think that um it will ultimately end up uh shooting people in the foot in a way, um trying to trying to design something to help to support our community as a whole is much more valuable. Uh, and therefore, it really needs to be redesigned to be a measure that's more um equitable for everyone and not just relying on the backs of one particular entity versus another entity. Um, we want to do greater things for our community, so building out a proper measure with more uh robust abilities, um it's much more, yeah.
And Jeremiah.
Yeah, uh, some some things like Jennifer said could be rewritten and some things were overlooked and rushed. Uh, you know, it it it's hard for me to sit here and and have this great opinion based on someone else's opinion, what they think about someone else. I I don't know, it's just too hi- hypothetical. And I I'm I'm not gonna pick sides on renters or landlords. And I I'm just not gonna pick a side on on what's fair or or what's not fair. It's, I'm sorry, I just defer this question. I'll wait for the next question.
Okay, Preston.
Thank you. First, a little context in terms of what the revenue for Measure R would go to fund, which is to continue the program of emergency rent support for tenants who get into um a financial crisis due to, for instance, a medical issue, which is the lead cause of personal bankruptcy in the country. Um, one reason to tax rental businesses is because they will receive much of the revenue from it. Uh, because it will go to pay rent that might not otherwise occur, and it will reduce tenancy turnover due to financial emergencies. Um, another reason is that sent data from the US Census shows that rent in Albany has increased more than ten percent more from two thousand nineteen to two thousand twenty two than inflation. That is essentially a windfall because of our past discriminatory housing policies. And so we are proposing that it's reasonable to capture some of that windfall to help the tenants that are having the most difficulty. Thank you.
Hey, Aaron.
So, like Preston mentioned, uh, this uh Measure R would continue a program that I mentioned in the last question, the one that provides direct targeted and one-time assistance to keep people housed. And it's a measure that Preston and I suggested brought forward to the council as well as went through a variety of discussion as well as significant stakeholder engagement for. I think, like Preston mentioned, the main reason that uh this tax is targeted is that the uh people it taxes are the primary beneficiaries, given that the program uh funds programs that specifically target participants in the rental market. And like Preston mentioned, the largest tranche of funds, rental assistance, puts that money directly back into the pocket of landlords who have tenants who face a one-time emergency. This not only helps them with direct funding, but it keeps them from losing revenue uh that they would otherwise lose when they are searching for a new renter when they've lost the old one. And all that costs for most rented businesses in Albany, just ten dollars a month, which seems very worth it for me to continue a very effective program.
Okay, Peggy.
Yes, thank you. Um, I think that what should have happened before this went on the ballot was to have a comprehensive plan and the evaluation, excuse me, of what the needs actually are in the city, both for renters and and straight across the board, what are our our needs? Um, and then to come up with an equitable data-driven approach to fund these needs. And I think that that should be that the revenue, the the tax that would be needed should be borne by the entire community, not a subset of um our business community. I think there's a lot of reasons that people need help with rental assistance or any other type of assistance. Um, and I, it's not only because sometimes the rent goes up, it could be a variety of other things. So I think it's a community-wide problem that should be solved by the community. And I think that that's it for me.
Okay, Jeremiah, the next question will be starting with you. What are the impacts of Golden Gate Fields closing? And how do you believe the land should be developed?
Two questions?
I guess it's one thing to the other. What are the impacts of Golden Gate Field closing? And how do you believe the land should be developed?
The impacts of Golden Gate Field closing, a lot of emotional impacts. I mean, I there's families that went down there on Sundays to do a family activity. So I'm sure people were emotional that they can't do that anymore. Um, I'm sure gamblers uh don't are upset because they have nowhere to go gamble. You know, but the school doesn't get money, right? The taxes. And so what was part two?
And how do you think it should be developed?
I think that's a good question for uh the Native Americans. And I think that we should give the uh Golden Gate Fields, I think it should be, you know, a loney territory or um, a a Native American and let and let the Native Americans decide what the land should be.
Thanks. And now Preston.
Thank you. Well, the the um first impact I would highlight is, you know, I have animals dying for entertainment in Albany, for which I'm I'm quite grateful. Um, when I served on the Walk Front Committee about twenty years ago, I was shocked to learn how frequently that occurred. Um, in terms of financial impact, the cessation of operation is uh reduced revenue to Albany by about three hundred thousand dollars, which for context is about one percent of Albany's revenue stream. Um, and so financially, impact is is not that that great from Albany. Uh, Golden Gate Fields closing, obviously, depending on what happens to it next, the revenue could go up, the revenue could go down. Um, take a crystal ball uh to figure that out. As far as development, I'm skeptical of development there because of sea level rise, which clearly is coming. Um, climate change is happening much faster than even the uh most dire predictions, uh scientific models. And so I think that needs to be looked at with great care.
Okay, Aaron.
Yeah, um, like Preston mentioned, uh, there is an economic impact. Uh, and uh I'll go further and say that if Golden Gate Fields were to be sold and uh no longer pays parcel tax, it'll affect the city by about eight hundred thousand dollars and the school board by a similar amount. And you can view, we have a city webpage that details this. I encourage people to take a look at. Um, I think the other main impact is it gives Albany a chance to take a look at it and see what we would rather have happen there that is a little more in tune with our values and doesn't require horse racing. Uh, and that's why my goal for how Golden Gate Fields is developed is to have the Albany community have a voice in that. Uh, we had a voice division process a couple of years back that looked at it and found the compromise of about seventy five percent open space, twenty five percent development. I think that's probably about right, but I think we need to have that process anew, given that it's real now. Uh, and I've worked on council to try and make that happen by developing contacts in the governor's office so that we know what's happening, who's negotiating to buy it, and ensure that we have a seat at the table as a community when it does get bought and that conversation starts happening. Thank you.
Hey, Peggy.
Thank you. Um, I think, as has been mentioned, the financial impact of Golden Gate Fields closing is um is real and something that needs to be considered. It's a huge piece of property, and to think that there's only one use for that property, I think is a real mistake. I think it it needs large piece of it should be left as open space. And how what that exactly looks like will be determined down the road. Um, I I think some housing down there is is probably necessary. We've got to, we need housing. That's a huge piece of property. We can certainly put some housing there. Um, as Preston mentioned, the impacts of climate change, it'll need to be thought it thought through very thoughtfully so that something is not developed that in ten years doesn't work. Um, I would like to see some retail down there. And I've said this before and I'm gonna say it again. I would really like to see some type of performing arts center down there with a school district, city combination. That would be wonderful.
Okay, and Jennifer.
Um, yeah, you know, growing up here, that's been um a longstanding tradition down there for a lot of families. And I understand that that's, it's always hard for change. Um, I do feel uh strongly also about, you know, climate change and the fact that we don't really know what's gonna, you know, happen, how fast it's approaching at that far, you know, greater speeds than we have ever really anticipated. And in the same context, um, you know, I really feel like uh open space is very important. We're running out of open space along our shorelines and stuff, so I think that that's crucial to to keep those spaces open, especially with climate change. As far as putting any sort of housing or other developmental thing, um, you know, with the insurance industry in California right now, flood zones, fire zones, everything else, that could be a real challenge to put anything developed there. Um, insurance-wise as well.
Okay, and we're gonna be starting with Preston. The question is, how would you describe the city's fiscal picture? And what should be done to improve transparency and increase revenue?
Um, so the, I think as I mentioned in my opening, um, the city has had an operating surplus of over a million dollars for each of the last four years. Um, that is quite useful because that can help to pay for some of the capital expenditures that the city needs to make, uh replacing various equipments. Um, maintaining buildings and we don't need to put up on measure on the ballot because of that. Um, so the city's been quite functional in that regard. Um, Albany, even though it has almost twice the population of Piedmont and about forty percent more population than Emeryville, has the smallest budget um by far in Alameda County of the fourteen cities. So it is an incredibly efficient city for all the services it provides. And in terms of future revenue, um, I think there's opportunity in continuing to restructure our property taxes from taxes that are the same amount per residence to a tax per building area or per property area, which also has an equity benefit. Um, so I think there is opportunity to to make our taxes more equitable and raise revenue. Thank you.
Hey, Aaron.
So, like Preston mentioned, we uh just got an update on this just last night at the city council. Uh, we have uh realized a surplus for the past several years. Um, that's despite budgeting for a deficit. We are, we, as our finance department is fond of saying, we are very conservative in our uh in looking outward. Uh, and that results in us being, like you said, very efficient, uh very nimble and actually not realizing that deficit usually. Um, now that might not continue forever. We know that our expenses will keep getting higher, uh and that's not because we're doing anything wrong. Uh, it's because there is an unfunded pension liability at the state level that every uh government is being hit with that we'll have to fund. And so like Preston mentioned, I think there's a lot of things we can do uh and pass new revenue measures that are progressive, so fair to people and not hitting those at the bottom of the income spectrum is hard. That can increase that and ensure that we are offering the full services that we always have. Um, and I think we can do that while maintaining the transparency that I think we've been getting better and better at uh in how we've been presenting our budgets each year. Thank you.
Hey Peggy.
Thank you, um, when I was on council, we, we often felt faced a deficit. And as it has been stated, it usually did not come to fruition. Part of that, however, is based on not having, not being fully staffed and sort of balancing the budget on the back of of staff. Um, I think what we really need to be focusing on right now, and I think we're getting better at it, gotten better at it over the years. Is developing a long-range comprehensive fiscal plan. And included in that are the the pension issues. You know, there's, there are not a lot we can do about them, but we do need to to pay them. And we need to figure out where that money is going to come from. We have a active um, financial advisory committee, I'd like to see um. Them taking it a little bit more seriously as they talk about deficits and what we can do to raise money. Um, give them a little bit more credibility, I think would be important. Thank you.
Great, and Jennifer.
So, I'm gonna ask a repeat of the question one more time, sorry.
Sure, how would you describe the city's fiscal picture and what should be done to improve transparency and increase revenue?
So that uh, is something that we have to definitely continue looking at different avenues of increasing revenue. Revenue um, streams are one of the things that uh, I was most um. Active on trying to find different ways to bring in more revenue rather than just cut. Uh, you know, cut staff as Peggy mentioned, cut um, different areas. We do do a lot of services, we have a lot of services that we offer for a very limited budget, much like uh, what Preston had mentioned as well. Um, you know, one of, one of the things that um, is really important to note about the budget. Um, is that it is not fully baked yet, we're still have an audit to do. So although things might look good right now, you know, we've got a couple of months, they're still working through audits. Um, things can change drastically from one point to the next, it's a very slim line that we're working with, so it's important to note.
Okay, and Jeremiah.
Yeah, sorry, uh, my phone cut out a battery, so I had to re, uh, put it back on the charger. Um, you know, regarding transparency with the city Albany finances. Definitely, um, they they shouldn't be approving any money after midnight, city council meetings, they shouldn't be. Doing, uh, giving people raises after midnight at city council meetings, everything should be done, first agenda item if they're. You know, doing jobs, um, such as raises for, you know, city managers or something. Instead of the last agenda item is new business and waiting for everybody to fall asleep. And then, okay, yeah, you get your raise when nobody's looking. That's not transparent, right? So things like that, um, when city managers are given raises should be the first agenda item, not the last. Um, regarding, um, we need to get grants revenue. I don't know who our person is that we hire to uh, apply for at least one grant every day. I don't know what city staff member, but we need to apply for way more grants than we are.
We have to move on, we're gonna start with Aaron, this question is, how should we make sure that people can bike, walk, use scooters, et cetera? Safely and easily in Albany.
Thank you, um, I think we've been making progress on this, uh, I think a lot of us here have been involved. In our Canes and Adams Bike Way pilot projects where we're trying to connect up. Uh, our bicycle infrastructure and our bikeways with uh, those of the city, spin the north and south of us to allow people to bike alongside our major thoroughfare on San Pablo. That's been an iterative process, we recently approved what hopefully will be its final form, um, of creating uh, dual lanes there. I think that's one example of a project that has been, that is going to be very successful at creating uh, more bicycle infrastructure. Uh, we've also uh, worked to create similar uh, sort of bike infrastructure around University Village. Where there will be a, a new path next to the new development there that will enable more people to bike and walk to school. Um, so I think we are making progress here, uh, I think we can always make more. I'm, uh, I would love if we had protected bike lanes everywhere, it's often difficult to achieve with the width of our streets. Uh, but I think it's something we can do if we're willing to compromise on sometimes a couple parking spaces or making a street one way. Thank you.
And Peggy.
Thank you. I think one thing that's coming to to the council in the coming year is going to be the update of the active trans- transportation plan. Which certainly focuses on all modes of transportation. Um, hopefully with the focus on walking, bicycling, um, scootering. And people that um, use other types of mobility aids. Um, I think, you know, one thing that I see and I, when I was on council, I heard a lot and I'm sure they hear it too. Are people go too fast, running stop signs, running red lights. The drivers are not as cautious around um, pedestrians as they need to be. And and I'd like to see us put a little more focus on, on that, not, not necessarily a punitive way, but just reminding people that. They need to slow down, they need to stop, and people need to be safe on our streets. Like we have put a lot of effort into making them straight, safe, but if we don't enforce it, it it's all for naught. Thank you.
Hey Jennifer.
I'm with Peggy on this one, we, we have done a lot so far, yes, there's improvements, um, but again. You know, enforcing, um, you know, kind of the rules of safety and and. Uh, you know, also, it starts with our youth also, um. One of the things that I had mentioned the last time I ran was, um, my grandmother uh, was a crossing guard. And she was Albany's first crossing guard at Cornell Elementary School. And she used to teach the kids, everybody would have to get off their bike and walk it across the intersection. And you know, look both ways, look to your left, look to your right, look to your left again. We're missing a key component in just safety, just in general, people are too fast to get everywhere, they're distracted by so many things. And really bringing it back down to the core and keep teaching, um, you know, safety. In the young generation so that they grow up to know the rules.
Okay, and uh, Jeremiah.
Another good reason why City Albany needs school zones is to make our roads safer. So we can reduce our speed limits around our schools. Um, you know, I do see a lot of people improperly riding their bikes on the sidewalks. Um, kids, adults, I see it all the time on Solano, um, people are just in a hurry. I mean, there's only what, four or five places even ride your bike in Albany? San Pablo, Solano, side streets. A park. The Bart Trail. I mean, so, the Bart Trail says. Solano, you gotta be careful, but we could reduce Solano's speed uh, to fifteen. San Pablo State Highway is really unsafe, um, but just another good reason why school zones would help. Um, reduce the speed traffic around our schools and, and school zones would help. Um, be the start to make our, our riding bikes and scooters safer in Albany.
Thank you, and then Preston.
Thank you, uh, yes, the Albany's last active transportation plan was adopted in two thousand twelve. Um, city staff recently reviewed what has been implemented from it, and it is pretty astounding, all the, all the projects that have been implemented. Um, but it is time for a new plan and the city is embarking on that and to take the next step. Towards facilitating people to use active transportation. Um, there is uh, city property along a number of streets that would allow building cycling facilities behind the curb. So not impacting car parking, um, but providing people who are not comfortable riding on the street, which is. Turns out is most people, um, the opportunity to be able to bike on a path off-street. Uh, an example of seizing these opportunities is when I came into office, I started working with UC Berkeley to build a new bike path on Jackson Street. Um, the first segment has just been open next to the Chon Ruway um, Graduate Residence Building. And the next project, uh, segment of that will be coming to the city council in October, so we do have opportunities to keep advancing.
Hey, and Peggy, we're gonna start with you. Is there anything that needs to be changed about the commission committee structure in Albany?
Um, I think the, at, the council and. Not specifically this council, but every council needs to constantly be evaluating. The uh, advisory bodies, which ones we have and what they're doing. Um, you know, we've, as, as time goes on, you add some, you subtract some, and it's, it's kind of an evolution of what's really needed. Uh, as far as the structure goes, I like the fact it uses on all of them. I like the fact that council members appoint and sometimes the entire council appoints. I like the um, the work plan that that they've developed, so it's, it goes along with the strategic plan and with the budget and with the um. With all, all of our plans, everybody's working together in the same way. Um, I think sometimes they're not as effective as they might be, perhaps they don't really understand their role and it needs to be more education on that. Thank you.
Okay, and Jennifer.
Yes, definitely more education, I served on the Economic Development Committee and the first year that I served on, I wasn't really. Completely sure what I was doing there, um, and so. Yeah, I think it's, it's definitely an education piece and to also put it out to more people, we'd like to get more people involved. And more voices, it's really uh, difficult sometimes to seat some of these committees or commissions. Just because we don't get the proper amount of applicants qualified to, to be on these boards, so that can be challenging within itself. And sometimes when there's so many different uh, groups, it's hard to really dig into what needs to happen. So it is a constant evolve, uh, evolution of committees and commissions. And they have to be brought back and looked at, adjusted, reconfigured for what's going on in our current times.
Hey, Jeremiah.
Yeah, great question, that's something, uh. I was trying to improve myself when I got to serve on the Social and Economic Justice Commission. Um, I was appointed by the Albany Unified School District Board of Education. Um, I was selected to be on a, a commission for Albany. And the, the most difficult thing I had on that was the subcommittees and doing, giving reports. There was no subcommittee training. Um, it was very vague on, if you have a subcommittee of two people, if one person doesn't attend the next meeting. Can you still give a report? If both of the subcommittees people aren't in attendance at the meeting? It was just, it was very confusing, you know, I. We had very important committees that me and myself, uh, and another were on, two people. And we'd have subcommittee meetings every month.
Hey, that's.
But then another member, so I would improve training, training the big thing.
Okay, Preston.
I think it's been mentioned, it's, it's important for the council to review, um, the advisory bodies that it has created on a periodic basis. And uh, two years ago, I, I led the council in an effort in that regard. While I was mayor, if I recall, and um. Led the council in realizing that there were some bodies that had done good work, but were no longer um, needed, given what was going on and how things evolved. And uh, so led the, the sunset of those bodies, which. Is a hard thing to do, um, because they're obviously volunteers and segments um, of the community that. That really appreciate those bodies and want them to continue, um, so it takes some. It takes some bravery to take the hit, uh, to look at the bodies honestly and determine are they all. Um, what the city needs, because each cost, uh, you know, some, some amount of money and staff time, they're not free.
Okay, and Aaron.
So, this is something that the council in my time on it has uh, worked on a lot. Uh, we created uh, several committees, including the Policing Commission and our Housing Advisory Commission, uh, we redesigned. Uh, our uh, Social and Economic Justice Commission to be the Rise Commission, which Jennifer helped lead with our Vice Mayor Robin Lopez. Um, and I think like others have mentioned, we added seats on all bodies for uh, youth and people associated with the school district, which I think has been. A really good addition, so it's something we, we thought about. Um, like Preston mentioned, I think it's always important that we be willing to right-size uh, the amount of commissions we have. And make sure they're useful, which uh, to me can be a difficult process, but is really uh, less uh, you know, taking more onto the council. More saying the buck sometimes stops with us as elected representatives and sometimes we need to be the ones uh, doing the work on this. I think also, one of the most important things we can do is work with uh, some of the members of those commissions when they have sort of the stickier issues. Because they may have a lot of energy, but we have the knowledge to find the compromise that makes it work or find what's possible, and I've really tried to do that. Thank you.
Okay, and now we have come to our last question, we're gonna start with Jennifer. And the question is, what do you believe should be the role of the Policing Commission? What powers, if any, should it have?
So, the Policing Commission is um, kind of one of those commissions that we have to look at. Um, you, you know, a little bit further, a little bit deeper. There's been some frustration on that commission, um, about not feeling like they're able to maybe get the answers that they want. However, it's challenging also in the fact of police work is that there are some things that need to be kept. Uh, you know, more private just due to the nature of um, the circumstance that be. Um, so we need to find ways to give them a little bit more clear direction and as to what their real purpose. And what the benefit can be, because I think that there's a lot of misconception and confusion around that particular commission. Um, specifically actually, so it's interesting that you asked that question, thank you.
Hey, and Jeremiah.
Can I repeat the question, please?
Sure, what do you believe should be the role of the Policing Commission? What powers, if any, should it have?
It should have what, the purpose it was created for, I mean, it was created for a reason. And they should be able to do what it was created for, the purpose, there shouldn't be any red tape, any roadblocks, there should be full transparency. Um, yeah, I, I have seen a lot of improvements. You know, um, with traffic updates and uh, the city has a website on, you know, certain burglaries happen here. You know, pinpoint certain, certain things like that. Um, honestly, I think, I think uh, they should have some power, let's see, the, the police department wants to spend money on. Uh, military equipment that they don't want to tell us what it really is. That's to come out full-blown in the meeting, what is it? But you know, full transparency, that's what that commission's for and, and also to um, review and investigate any HR. Situations, any, let's say there's police brutality on a ci- citizen.
Hey, thank you.
That case should be heard in front of the board, things like that.
Okay, next person is Preston.
Thank you, um, yes, I think the, the charge of the commission as a stance is well-formed, um, it took. About fifteen months to develop that mission, um, the commission is approximately two years old, maybe a little less. So it's still in the process of. Um, developing its practices, both the police department and engaging with the commission, the commissioners themselves. Um, I think it has been useful in terms of uh, transparency. With regard to, say for instance, the dashboard that the pu- um, police department now provides at the beginning of each commission meeting regarding. Various enforcement activities. And um, I know I myself in watching the meetings have, have learned about, you know, the, the history of complaints. Um, how many there are, what type there have been, um, to the department, which ones have been upheld. But I think it does serve a, a quite useful function as the way it's currently structured in terms of providing a forum for transparency.
Okay, and Aaron.
So, to give some additional background, the Policing Commission was formed out of our, um, uh, out of another committee, uh, task force. Worked on it and it uh, was a difficult process to get started like Preston mentioned, um, now. Uh, the, that was a great example of what I mentioned the last question of a lot of energy that we had to figure out on council, how to. Harness and find the compromises and the ways it could work for our city. Um, and I undertook a big part of that process and worked with some of the members of that task force, and some of them became members of that Policing Commission to get it set up. And like Preston mentioned, it has a couple of different roles right now, including transparency, advising on policy, and some amount of oversight. Um, I think all those are useful roles, uh, and it, it's still in the process of right-sizing all of those and figuring out how exactly we can do them all the best we can. Um, I think, again, that's all possible, and I've been working with some members of that commission to try and figure out what's the best way we can implement it, uh, and their recommendations, and how we can make them as useful and as impactful as we can. Thank you.
Okay, and Peggy?
Well, in full disclosure, I sit on the Policing Commission, so um, my perspective might be a little different. I think the role is to work on building trust between the Police Department and the community, the community and the Police Department, and also to educate the community as to the um policies, procedures of the of the Police Department. I think um it's been a little bumpy start. We we've probably been less than two years into this, and so we're still kind of trying to get our our bearings. Um, I think it's important to remember that it is, it is not a review board as some cities do have. That is, that is really not our role. Um, but we can do good work in building trust and education of the community. Thank you.
Hey, I want to thank everyone for their thoughtful answers. We're going to move into the closing statements, and we're gonna go in the opposite order of the introductory statements. So you have two minutes for your closing statement, and we're starting with Jennifer.
Okay, well, thank you again uh for everyone who's joined us or is listening to the recording. I want to thank everybody for the opportunity to speak tonight, to answer your questions. Um, I'm sure many of you have many other questions out there. I am very much um open to uh any emails or uh phone calls or anything. If somebody wants to learn a little bit more about um me and my background and what kind of things that um I feel like I'm I'm bringing forth as a benefit to our city and our community. Um, I I encourage you to reach out to me. Um, and I just, I hope that I, the voters out there may consider um, you know, voting for me again this election and um giving me an opportunity for a full four years to uh, it continue to engage with our community and continue to bring forth um important objectives and um opportunities and solutions, and just really bring people together and find uh solutions that work best for our community. Um, I'm not gonna take up the whole two minutes uh or rattle off a bunch of endorsements or anything else like that. Um, I just, I hope to meet uh many of you out on um our city uh streets and sidewalks and look forward to uh seeing you there. Thanks.
Okay, Peggy?
Thank you. Um, again, Jennifer said, thank you all for coming. Thank you for the lead, for providing this opportunity for us. Albany, excuse me, Albany needs uh council members who are are able to work collaboratively to develop policies that reflect our community's values. I have a proven record of doing just that. My unique perspective as a former council member and a former school district employee gives me unparalleled insight into Albany's needs. I've earned a reputation for being responsive to the entire community, for listening to the views of everyone, and building consensus. At a time when some wish to divide us, I will continue to seek ways to uplift all community members, understanding it's our diversity that makes us strong, and it is only by hearing every voice that we make the best decision. I'm thrilled and humbled by the support of so many community members, including, I'm sure, many of you in the audience. I've been endorsed by the Albany Democratic Club, the Asian Pacific American Democratic Caucus, East Bay Young Democrats, Mayor John Micky, Supervisor Keith Carson, and over a hundred community members and many regional elected officials. We're fortunate that we live in a state with many options for when and where you vote. So I hope you vote me number one on your ballot, honor before November fifth. For more information about me and my campaign, please check out my website, www.mcquaidforthelaternumberfourcouncil.com, my campaign Facebook page and my Instagram page. And I look forward to greeting many of you in person as I take my campaign to the Albany neighborhoods. Albany has many exciting opportunities and a few challenges facing us, and I would love to put my experience and passion to work as your ci- as your city council member. Thank you so much.
Okay, Erin?
Thank you. Um, thank you all for holding this forum today and everyone for attending. Uh, Albany is a very small town with no local news source. Community events like these are vital for people to know who they're voting for. Um, it has really been the honor of my life to serve on the council for the past four years, and I hope to have the chance to continue to do so. I got involved in this work because I wanted to give back and because I wanted the city government of my hometown to include the voice of younger residents like myself. And I'm proud to say that since I was elected, our council is much more diverse in every aspect, uh, becoming more people raising young families, having younger, more people working in less overwhelm overwhelmingly weight. And I've been happy to contribute to that with uh Preston by supporting or by recruiting, training, and helping elect new leaders uh under the banner of Albany Forward, including our Mayor John Micky and our Vice Mayor Robin Lopez. Uh, in my time on council, I've been extremely proud proud to work with staff and fellow council members, and I believe we have accomplished more than most councils, especially for cities of Albany's small size, while maintaining open, honest, and very high-quality discussions. Uh, additionally, I've been a strong port, voice for Albany regionally in my appointments to the Association of Bay Area Governments and Ava Community Energy, in both of which my colleagues across the bay have recognized my leadership and appointed me to various committees as well as to the Vice Chair of Ava's Board. I hope to have the chance to continue my work for my hometown on council, further moving Albany forward by creating more affordable housing, ensuring we have a voice in the future of Golden Gate Fields, and taking stronger action on climate adaptation, among many other areas of progress. I'm honored to have been endorsed by Mayor John Micky, Vice Mayor Robin Lopez, the Albany Democratic Club, State Senator Nancy Skinner, the Alameda Democratic Party, the East Bay Young Democrats, Latina Young Democrats of Alameda County, Asian Pacific American Democratic Caucus of Alameda County, Mayor Berkeley Jesse Aragine, Berkeley Council Member Terry Taplin, and the number two endorsement of the Sierra Club. Please vote Albany Forward, Arantina and Preston Jordan, you're number one, number two, and visit albanyforward.org for more info and how to get involved. Thank you.
Okay, Preston?
Thank you. I am grateful to the voters for choosing me to represent um the last four years. Uh, if I should be chosen again by the voters, uh, my, some of my goals are to lead the restoration uh of city streetlights in the city. Um, I led a volunteer team that did a census of the streetlights and found about one out of four of them are no longer functioning. Um, I've started a leading effort with staff to get those restored. Uh, beyond that, there are many dark intersections that our new um street lighting guidelines indicate should have more lighting. Um, so I hope to uh accomplish that, uh, which may take, that may actually take upon measure, uh, but that will be on the voters if that comes forward. Uh, I would like to initiate installation of electric vehicle chargers um along street parking. And finally, to uh, as a final example, to increase equity and revenue by bringing Belmont Village under Albany's property taxes. So despite having a um business model, it's a for-profit business that really serves the upper ten percent, if not five percent, um, by wealth, uh, do a loophole because it's on UC Berkeley land. It is not subject to our property taxes. There is a way to close that loophole. We would have to place all our property tax measures on the ballot, and we'd be able to do so. So I'm very focused on that, both to increase revenue and revenue and increase equity. Um, I am endorsed by the Mayor and Vice Mayor, as I mentioned. I'm endorsed by the School Board President Bonnie Davidson, School Board Vice President Becky Hopwood, the Albany Democratic Club, number one by the Sierra Club, the Alameda County Democratic Party, the East Bay Young Democrats, Latin Young Democrats of the East Bay, and the League of Conservation Voters of the East Bay. I ask that you please rank Erin and I number one and number two on your ballots to continue moving Albany forward. Thank you, League, for hosting these forums. As a moderator in the past, I know how much work it is, um, and so I'm so grateful. Here's the victory.
Okay, Jeremiah, your closing statement.
Oh, there's that me. Okay. Um, the thing about, I don't know, closing statement? If, if you want to meet me, like I was saying, every single week I give out food to about a hundred, a hundred fifty people. Last week I gave out seventy-two dozen eggs. Most likely to happen again this Thursday. Um, I usually bring about six to eight hundred pounds of food to people every week myself. Um, just think of what I could do if I was on city council. I could bring a lot more to Albany. Um, I would renegotiate UC Berkeley uh because the UC Berkeley used to pay for three out of six Albany crossing guards. Half of the crossing guards were funded by the UC Berkeley. So they took away spending money on our crossing guards, and they just gave it to us somewhere else. But now that money that UC Berkeley took away uh for crossing guards made us create a whole tax, sugar-free tax, and and all this stuff for crossing guards, for three crossing guards. So right now we only have six crossing guards. Um, and I don't know why UC Berkeley isn't paying for their half anymore. So that's one thing I would change is get that the school zones implemented in our municipal codebook. And with that, we could have funding from the state, which is a grant from uh the state to help pay for crossing guards. But the simple fact that we don't have crossing uh school zones in our municipal codebook, the state can't legally give us a school zone grant because we don't have school zones. Thank you for your time. If you want to meet with me, I'm on Thursdays, Solano, and Talbot. Thank you. Have a good night.
Hey, thank you. And I just want to um have the closing statement from the League of Women Voters, but take a look at the chat box. Um, there is a link to join the League of Women Voters. There is a link to register for the Alameda County Board of Supervisor District Five Candidate Forum, which is happening Tuesday, September twenty-fourth at six thirty with the link for that. And to register for California Senate District Seven Candidate Forum on Monday, September thirtieth, twenty twenty-four at six thirty. Um, the link is there. We know that some of the people here have not had your particular questions addressed. The screeners can find similar questions of general interest for the audience in the limited time we had. We hope you will contact the candidates directly for additional information. Your local league also participates in Vote Four One One, an online collection of candidates' information. We encourage you to view the candidates' resumes, platforms, and positions there. If you have moved or changed your name or wish to change your party affiliation since you last registered, you need to re-register. Online voter registration is available at the Secretary of State's website, It's secure and it's easy. The deadline to register to vote online is October twenty-first. Voters may also register to vote on Election Day and vote provisionally. Ballots will be mailed out on October seventh. You can vote in person, by mail, or place your ballot in an official Alameda County ballot drop box. Whatever you choose, please, please remember to cast your ballot on or before Election Day, November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Thank you to our candidates for participating this evening. Thank you for time. Thank you in the audience for taking time to become an educated voter. We also had many volunteers participate, and we want to thank them for their help. We want to welcome any of you to join the League of Women Voters in empowering voters and defending democracy. So please vote on November fifth or before. Thank you very much, and have a wonderful evening.